Committee of the whole to approve the minutes of June 18th. Give me a second. Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we're gonna start with our board retreat presentation. Starting from her place of standing, okay? So, I'm just going to introduce myself. I'm Chief, we're the best representative for New Jersey school boards. I know that, um, that has been serving the district, um, the public's reports, and, um, covering some statistics towards any more action. So, like, we know that they are actively going through the hiring process. Um, it does take a while, um, with the correct person, if you're trying to figure it out. When they determine, if they have any questions, if there's anything, feel free to reach out to the annual management explosion and each foundation we have with me. So, we, I was asked to come in and talk about the annual ethics presentation for you. Um, it can be just a minute. Um, I have little required to just say that I'm not providing actual guidance at your loss. Um, my board attorney is always the appropriate person to contact for guidance. But this is for educational purposes, so that you really have the information that's valuable to you. So, it's a set of guidelines that we use to go forward, so that the boards, uh, what's officially and how easily we can source information. So, it's recognized that it's essential for, um, conduct of members of the board and of the administration to maintain, uh, the respective competence of the people of our community that you serve. And to do that, you have to avoid conduct, which is a violation of the public trust. Or, and this is important, which we use as just a file for compression for member or reasonable member of the public that they're trusted in, right? So, I would say it's kind of similar, so if a woman's, uh, get family gathering or cocktail party and walk in and people cut their heads, they're looking at you whispering. What they're doing may not actually be about the, right? They need a certain compression and a certain force, and then they'll talk to them in that situation. So, we always want to remember, it's not only about the number of law, it's also about the impression that we are communicating with the people. So, because the School Ethics Act is really, um, intend to ensure and preserve the public's confidence in school officials, which should fall apart as board members, it's recognized that we need to get a bit of some standards, involve some standards, and also to understand maybe disciplinary mechanism for the violation of those standards. And it's really important, just to point out, that these are minimal ethical standards that they're passing the year-end compliance with. But when we hold that, that higher goal, maintaining public trust, right? Um, it's not enough to just meet it. We have to really always maintain that and develop it, so, next one. So, there are four provisions to help the act that new boards have accountability for school officials to maintain that public trust. The fourth is actually quite important numbers, but ethics mandatory training, kinds of prohibited acts and disclosure statements. Now, for, uh, the administrators, they have the kinds of prohibited acts and by the way, disclosure statements with relatives, family, and financial statements. Next one. So, it's important to understand who reinforces the act. It's not major school boards, they're just asking now to train for it. It's, um, the School Ethics Commission, which is composed of nine members that are appointed by the government. No more than five can become one board party. Two are support members from throughout the state. Two are school administrators from throughout the state. And in conclusion, there are five non-school officials to some of this commission that will decide cases that will be brought in. Now, currently, both support number positions are open, and so is one of the school administration power divisions. So, they're operating with the commission's sense, and that's not likely to change prior to the upcoming election. Next one. Um, so, important to know that anyone who is newly hired or newly comes on the board has to file their, um, disclosure statements within thirty days. But then, um, next year, they get to, uh, you are all responsible for filing that by the legal sort of end deadline, then the information that you provide is actually posted on the SEC website, is available to the public to see as well. And while some boards, the VA, the secretary will sometimes remind you, it's always important to understand that you contain that responsibility and ensuring that you meet the deadline, okay? And that there can be, um, penalties for failing to do this right, okay? Next one. So, mandatory training for board members is, um, within the first ninety days of coming on the board, the governance one training covers basic knowledge and skills. Explains about NJQSEC, which is a self-podding process, or in other words, your cycle, they come in and inspect to make sure, um, that the circuit's functioning as expected properly. HIV, so you're trained on that and you're owed for that. Superintendent evaluation, which is very important, because you have been raising all function as board, right, your policymakers, planners, and appraisers. And the way that you evaluate the superintendent should be tied into the district goals and the representatives, the prime responsibility of board members to do that, because that's how you are ensuring the oversight, that the district is properly run day-to-day, right? For students. By the end of the year two, governance two goes into planners and policy. Governance three, the third year, goes to student achievement and labor. And every year following the re-acquaintment, um, for reelection, you take governance four, so that you have those recent legal updates when you're new, as you do your board. Okay? New Jersey school boards, they've required, um, identified as the provider of mandatory training. Mandatory training has to be, um, set up through VA, through the census. Um, so that's how we track it. New Jersey school boards, again, it's not yet an expedition, but we are required to turn over the data so people can follow up on compliance through the ethics commission. So, I just ask that you make sure that you use the district emails, that that's on the census, that check you regularly, because whether it's your field service or if you see somebody going in the direction and you have compliance, really should try to get to the first to sort that all out. Um, again, you can go on our district, um, sorry, you can go on our website and you can see, um, offerings of what the community, and when they're going to be offered, just let the VA know so people can be properly ready to report. And it's offered in various forms, in person, via virtual, self- based, um, next slide. So, advisory opinions. I didn't create this slide, these slides go throughout the Google department, um, but this should really come after the next slide that we can look at. But the advisory opinion, once you look at the code, you may, um, wanna take your action in the future and say, you know, now that I've got training on the ethics and the standards of getting on the code of ethics, I'm not sure if this is appropriate, right? Or if I would get in trouble for doing this. So, because of that, any school official or board attorney in your cap can make a request for advisory, which is guidance, before you take an action, to make sure that you're okay. Um, and also, what they'll do is if they get a good question they have and they provided guidance, they have it and it's available to you, this is highlighted on the slide, but, um, you can then look and research that for guidance before you even have to ask for your own, get new in question, um, and they decide that this would be valuable to other boards throughout the state, they'll remove any identifying information during your district meeting on there, it's really just for purposes of being against us. Um, so, next one. So, please also, it's our highest attention, right? Recognizing that the School Ethics Commission is holding the authority to judge these cases that come before it, or, um, expected, you know, some basically that there's been a violation, they look at the evidence. So, they also retain that power to review, um, guiding information or through the advisory opinions, but the expectation is that you follow the guidance and give them. It's like the police officer says, no, you can only go through the file in this moment, and you choose to go since we, you can choose to do that, but it's probably going to be the consequences. Okay? On the bottom, and I think this might have been shared with all the board members? Okay, so the high level in this presentation, the one on the bottom, will bring you to the advisory opinions. And there are two of us coming out at a time, so if you do have a question before you go to your board attorney, or if you help, you can look there and you might see what they were looking for. Next one. So, here, I'm going to go over like one, I don't think we need to go over all of them, right? But, important to know about this, if you just try to put this information, and they're these little ones that have decided from this past year, can a board member, and then summary of the School Ethics Commission response. So, in the form where it says like A14 dash 24, that means advisory, P14, year 2024, this was posed to them for advice and guidance, and then they bear answer in submissions on the board's side. So, if you just look at one of these, um, A0924 is cabinet board number Bill Child, Fortin the district, as a new director in space, high level, and substitute, okay, there's no third party employer, participated in that was related to the superintendent. And School Ethics Commission points out that what he has substitute in this situation is in conflict, because they didn't plead your third claim, so it isn't district lens, and superintendent is a person who by your district and running the district for you. Um, but due to a statement, which is, now that puts that person in chain command to superintendent, that is what approves that board member from participating in that. So, right, you come from a community, you have, um, and that's why one of the things that, um, has been shared with you is the Code of Ethics, so you keep the next page, you should sign off or return to your VA for retention and files. And then third sheet is, um, the explanation of relatives and family, so that you know whether or not these things are possible. Thanks for listening. So, I think we can, um, I think I'm very vulnerable, and I can definitely be a little bit of a little bit, but I really strongly recommend that you get comfortable with looking through the new ones, because they're current, right, and you may not have been aware, but also being comfortable using that high level, because we can see the cases in more detail and it starts to understand the thing. Um, now, for an ethics complaint, anyone can file an ethics complaint. Um, what happens is the School Ethics Commission will look at what's presented and then make a filing. So, it has to be, the ethics complaint has to happen in a way that they will know from the alleged violation, and it has to be specific to this section of the act, which we're gonna look at, that they believe has been violated. And on the bottom of the slide, I'm only showing you the factual evidence that would need to be provided to support their complaint, okay? Because the School Ethics Commission, they can go back to what information is provided and decide that they need to gather more information. Next one. So, if there are penalties, if it is seen that, yes, this is a fact violation, the School Ethics Commission is in charge of making the recommendation to the commissioner of education for the proper sanction, let's say, for the levels. So, the first one is a reprimand, which is basically a review by the commissioner of recognizing that that activity is in breach of the law, is actually a violation of the Code of Ethics, meaning that it could, you could actually be missing, you know, the competence of your public, and that's really the danger there. Um, but it's, let's call it a learning experience, right? Kind of, okay, it's only to be quiet, you can note it, it's on the record, but it doesn't mean that you don't want to go further than that. And then, this is essential, where it's a formal, this is probably a private commissioner, and it results in a reservation, um, that board member's name is out there. It's really much more important, right? Third one becomes, um, a possible suspension from any board activity, and you have to be away from the board for thirty, sixty, ninety days, whatever is determined, and not let any contact with any of your board business or fully in the participating motion about. And finally, you're removed, so you can be removed from the board, and an administrator who's also, um, found to be in an ethics violation could be terminated if needed, which is, you can't, I'm not gonna change what it says. Of course, none of you are concerned with that, right? So, on the next slides, I'm just going to go through A through J, what the code says, but I also hope, and please stop me if you have a question, right? Because it's not helpful unless you see it tied to what the action is there, right? So, the first one, of course, is uphold and enforcing all laws, rules, and regulations to disable education and board orders to continue to schools. Desire changes shall be brought without lawful, illegal, and ethical proceedings. So, you have policies in place, or policies in the body of how you conduct yourself, you know, in the, um, understanding of what the Code of Ethics Act, right? And, and look at the proper processes, and especially when you're going to your community's policies, or really how you communicate what you value, and what you expect to see in running these schools, and make sure that the people that are covered under them, right? So, it's important that we have procedures in place, um, and that we do things like first, second reading, you know, where you wanna make amendments, or any of the policies, so that we're hearing back from the community and we can, you know, go back to the next one. I think, you know, make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, how it seeks to develop and maintain for schools that need individually needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social status. And I think that's probably, you know, well understood, but, um, we also, in real terms, have to remember that, or sometimes something a little complicated, choosing a board for it, and we have to remember in those very specific moments, when you're up against pledges, and you're up against maybe chasers, or a commander who, like, have, that only you have, have a really providing for both students and the community, so all students can be successful. And we should say, on the bottom, where it says standards on each of these slides, that's actually telling you that the factual evidence would need to be presented to support a claim that there's an obligation. Um, so, C, I would require my board actions of policy making and planning, and, of course, those are the goals and responsibilities of the board. And hope to frame policies and plans for the board has consulted with those who will be affected by them. Again, ensuring that you're following, um, that established processes and you're in compliance for good. Ensuring that the community understands that we're doing this, it's business being out of the public, so they can understand how we're providing the decisions, right? Next one. Um, oh, I'm sorry. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools. I think every board member is probably heard this many times, from any kind of training or defending anything regarding the school boards. But the next part of it is really something where sometimes we strip, right? And together with my fellow board members, we see that they all love. Now, what that speaks to really is that, as a board, you don't have one percent of your board, you know, authority as individuals, and I was, or known myself as six years ago, like, two years ago. You hold no authority as an individual for it, it's a present authority that's ran through the legislature, to be able to make action as intended, right? So, because of that, we wanted to make sure that we're, we have good processes in place, we're probably working together, certainly we can build stronger relationships with each other, communicating well with each other, and that we're not individually confusing the community by speaking where they can interpret his needs to be fully met, right? We don't have one voice, and we wanna make sure that we're working, getting each other, or do we all probably work as a person that's in your district, and making sure that it's safe place and we come to consensus, and not just like, oh, it's on you, right? E is, I would recognize that we have already wrested with board education and we have personal processes, so it's a private action that we compromise the board. So, in very real terms, we're not that bad. They could look like, I'm not sure if the board has litigants, community organizations, or, you know, if you post some address involved in community organizations, because board members are very active in their meetings, right? It's really important that, especially if you're a litigant, you're going out and you're asked to go out and provide information, to update that, you know, that group. Um, and perhaps while you're there, they say to you, from that organization, well, you know, I have a problem with this, what is the district going to do about this? That I really think. It's really important to understand, and we respond to that by saying, let me come back to the board, right? Because if you start to engage in that moment about, and you might, you might have to go back to the board, but you don't wanna do that in that moment. You wanna really always be sending that message, that as an individual, you have an authority, but your role is to bring that back to the board, to be addressed properly and support the main side of that, okay? F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgments of special interest or parties in local groups, or use the schools, personal meeting, or committee. That, um, the chief that I gave you has, you know, relationships, whether or not you shouldn't participate in this superintendent's evaluation, negotiations, right? Board members are not allowed to hire a member, a family member, or relative, maybe school buddy, servant, um, or, uh, the superintendent's family or relative. Of course, there are times when your family member may see you, be away from the service. We have to be aware of your responsibilities, so that members of the public don't think that there's any benefit to you, or in reality that you are not getting the benefit of a member that's in the process of that. I will hold confidential all matters, for teams and schools, we should explore with literature, be listening to literature, individuals, or schools. And I just wanna stop there for a moment, because one of the things I find that's really important for this to, uh, be on safe age of, is understanding when confidentiality is appropriate and when transparency is not appropriate, right? So, if you were to say, we're in a committee system, um, and you have your committee meeting, you have a plan for how you share that information with the rest of the board, right? If someone on board is under the committee, might have a question about something, it's not appropriate to bring it out to the board, right? There should be other methods where you can get the answers to your question, because they should only come out at public meetings to be transparent. One is ready for compliments that really hears sort of vanish, something that they understand and aren't going to be able to buy, right? Because if you lose the, the competence of the community in what we're doing, if you're hearing too many things, maybe you're looking at something in committee that haven't really gotten some point where to prepare, to make recognition to support the board. So, you wanna just really function, that's what it's talking about. Um, okay, can we go back, I'm sorry, can we go back? The second part of it is, in all of the matters, provide accurate information, and then consequently, like our board members, not acting individually, interpreting the staff, the aspirations of the community for the schools. So, we do that through our goal setting, and we do that through our policies, so that we really want everyone to be going forward, understanding what's expected and what's valued from the community, or the students that are going through this, okay? Next one. I will go to appoint the best qualified personnel available at the consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrator and officer. So, your superintendent is both educational leader of the community and the day-to-day chief executive of money business operations, right? So, he is reasonably qualified to be able to match up what the needs are for hiring with all of the things, right? What the budget support is, what the student needs are, how it's going to fit into the overall plan of the district, and will make that recommendation to the board. And as we know, superintendent is not really a member of your, of the board. Um, he's your advisor. So, it's really a responsibility to them, the board, you may have career policies that may allow to, you know, see how he got there, why is this person the best person? Maybe I see the resume or whatever, that should be outlined in the policies. But it's not for the board to suggest for higher, let's say, more active hiring. It's really, um, responsibility of the board. Um, next one. I will support your techs for the personnel and a proper, um, clear meetings. So, we remember a couple of years ago when health standards changed, and there was a lot of concern for parents about what that would look like in classrooms, or the students, and grade levels. Um, we have to understand that critical face, um, the year, assuming the learning standards and certain things are required. So, when personnel are properly performing their, um, their roles, uh, then the board, the roles of, of personal feelings, who, who has a board identity, we have to express support of personnel. So, that ensures that they have the competence to know that the board is behind them, and they can focus specifically on those early students, and have better outcomes as being a chief, right? Um, next one. So, K, I will refer all the things to the chief administrative officer and act on those complaints and public needs, only act if they're of an administrative solution. This one is one you all know, even if you don't realize it, is chamber community, right? It's going grocery shopping, or sitting on the field, or getting your child from school, or what happened, you're getting stopped, but a member of the community who sees you with ample authority, someone who can fix their problem, right? Now, it's really important to have the absolute response of education people that while you're in your district for them, that it's inappropriate for you as a board member to be having a further discussion, that you can attract them to board recognition, chain command, closest to the mission. So, it's assuming the classroom, the teacher, I tried that, I didn't like it, principal, right, uh, that's board number, and we're willing to surprise them, we let superintendent, then we have that conversation, and we first have to chain command. The important thing to understand here is if your conversation goes beyond that, and you support to say things like, I'll do two for you, but can see if I can find something now. And now, improperly engaging in that situation, and if it fails administrative solution, it could be a great solution, but it could be that that person doesn't accept that, the solution for this. There, it goes all the way up through the superintendent, and there's still no agreement that that's the best way forward, they will then come forward. And the board has to decide whether to support the recognition of the superintendent or not. But if you've had conversations in that process with the head of the board, you have to refuse yourself and not resist. So, we hope it never really has to come to the board level, we need to be aware of what really needs to be done. Um, next one. So, cases related to the Code of Ethics, these cases, when decided in finding in 2024, but I want to consider here, you'll notice, are case 25 dash 23, of the year 23, on the bottom, 24 dash 22, they go a lot, right? Because like most people, cases, they're not settled quickly, they go back and forth, and that's exactly what's happening here. So, um, the, the case on the bottom is, these are real cases, sometimes people are trying to put to believe they are. Um, a board member was involved in ongoing efforts to reverse an HIV and COVID kind of violation that was there however, okay? So, it's always, we always retain, right, advocate for your child, but where you get into common rule of ethics, is that you are going beyond, right? And here, the situation, so this board member made contacts, uh, contacts with the superintendent, individual board members, and board council to further her agenda, which was making those things. The actions were unrelated to board duties, and because of that, um, trying to get the rest of the board to reverse the directive that really was the responsibility of the superintendent, um, was undermining, and using the board council is inappropriate, because what happens to the community can have access to their council, board councils, will not vote in for that, right? So, it was found to be a violation, and we see on bottom, where it says NJSA code, CDP, that's a section of the code that was found to be violation. The School Ethics Commission recommended, um, reprimand, and it says reprimand because the commissioner did act upon that. Sometimes you'll see, we'll say, recommended whatever level, that's because the commissioner hasn't been in a lack yet for the, um, next one. We can go through this, this slide. This one, I would like to just point out, um, I think that's really important, because it starts off with a fifteen plus year board member, right? So, just to be clear, that the length of service on the board doesn't mean you, about, you have to really be intervisiting this, and this requires requirements, and we do this for that execution here, so we remind us of our responsibilities. But this board member's appropriate action beyond the board member. The action, um, was really sort of the authority of the superintendent, who's responsible for making the preliminary recommendations, and had done that without staff. The board member didn't agree with the superintendent, and took themselves to go to the employee's home, pick up a letter, presented to, um, presented to the board, presented it to VA and said, don't give it to the superintendent. Um, and they refused themselves from discussions at the board table. Theory had shown that they were no longer capable, right? Um, so, there's the alphabet underneath of all kinds of code that was violated, and this led to the hardening of suspension of six million wages. And from the time this was put out there, they finally, the commission acted by the commissioners, and to pack and recognition of the school. So, length of service, um, we want it to be valuable length of service, and we wanna remember that we may challenge those board members sometimes in pretty good intentions, but we consider, um, the, the, just want to make that clear. Next one. Um, if you want. So Hazel versus extension is a point I'm interested in, extension is a less normal way, you may, and you all try to create a holy meetings, but it may happen that you may not have had an opportunity to, um, look at a part of your packet, maybe there's going to be discussion, concept, you may even vote, and you feel, it's really not right to be asleep because you have really employees who aren't about the issue, so you can abstain from a vote and discussion. The difference is that Hazel is really the recognized, one way, that you're going on record and saying, the reason I'm not participating in the discussion in the vote, seems to recognize I have a conflict, and if I was back, it would be helping that community or the gathering of starts from state, being a superficial in the board of the board. So useless, the formal is qualifying yourself in discussion and vote. It's important if you feel that you have to refuse yourself on some things to make sure that it's not secret privately, because, um, your board attorney can let you know what is going to have an effect on your votes that might, especially if you're a major people and you may not inherently affect your one-on-one votes and things like that. You don't have to say why you're refusing yourself, but you have to have that conversation privately, but you have to go on record to refuse yourself. Next one. So we mentioned that prohibited acts is one of the things that you have to be compliant with. Basically, um, you need to refuse yourself if one of these situations is true. Uh, if you as a official or your immediate family would have a benefit due to a business interest or professional activity in comp that, you know, we're hiring speakers coming and I work for the organization that we're in, right? I have a business interest and my company has a private bid to be working with the commission. Use of your position to secure unwarranted privileges, advantages or employment, of course, for family members or relatives, that's, um, point to note, financial involvement that may carry your objectivity, you know, if you decide to do that, that may actually hurt me and my family finances, there's some way to, uh, service or employment that may prejudice or judgment, right? So sometimes you can know a lot about an issue, but we may feel very passionate that, you know, we want to bring this, like, your experiences and videos is important, not just, you know, some, some, but there's one superintendent, right? So even if others on the board, for instance, are educators, um, you're not in the role of being superintendent in this particular, right? So we want to just be, um, aware of things that could prejudice or judgment that you wouldn't be just neutral part of the table. Financial pain, gets favors, um, to persuade you, you know, if everybody gets a couple of coffee, because someone is selling in, another's selling, making a presentation, it probably be okay, but if they're taking one of you out for lunch every Friday, then that's probably not a problem. Important to remember is that you may never represent any person or party with this board of board, you always represent the interest of the position, right, students of the position. So, next slide. So they're talking about in prohibited acts, not having a benefit. So we're coming to talk about them, but you have to understand what they're going to do. So it is, the definition is indirect or indirect advantage, profit, for good or bad, for personal, financial, or otherwise. And lawyers both can do that, right? Or otherwise, that leaves it open, and the reason it leaves it open is because ethics violation cases are settled very much on specifics of that case, so we have advisory opinions that can inform us and guide us, but those cases are really looked at whether your, a reasonable member of your community would lose faith in these officials and impair how we serve our students. So the determinative factor is if whether you think you can still be objective in this situation, is whether a reasonable member of the board will need that sort of objective, okay? And one of the situations we have on the bottom was that an activist superintendent had put before a list for substitutes, and it came out that one of the names on the list was actually her son, right? So looking at that, that would be a benefit to the superintendent and it would also be a benefit to her son, who had financial need by doing that work. Um, when they did the investigation, uh, it was, the argument was that was maybe a lack of focus and not being in that list, they're not realizing some names on it, and it was an active superintendent who was experienced, um, but they would claim to recommend. So these are cases, just to, next one. So conflict benefit cases. The first one is a member of the board, this president of parents' association, sometimes HSA, KCA, whatever you may have here, and owns a spirit wear company, so the board member has the company. And also donate merchandise to sell as a fundraiser, uh, through the company's website, using the pencil to promote the sale of families. So you can look at it, not knowing anything, involved in this and say, well, it's been intended from a board member, writes a support and raise funds for these students. However, um, the problem with that, that creates an ethics violation, is that board member cannot use their business or work that cannot do it to support other things. The reason behind it is that it can lead to, um, the principal may not best, and in this situation, events of those families, we feel pressured participating by purchasing things that may be a violation, right? So the principal didn't want to be putting families in that position. That principal now has to be concerned about disappointing the board member who, you know, even if instead of having their wife, right? So that was a concern. And the sitting board member that owns the company will stand to be, right, even if they turn over a hundred percent of the financial, they'll be, oh, we look, right, people think, oh, you're a good board member, what are they saying you did, right? Your competitor in town may not have that advantage, but it is an advantage, a benefit that you would have done. So, um, it was recommended for recommend. Next one. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, I didn't give you that sheet that you can refer to, but it is important to understand who fits in the category before you participate, and especially superintendent's evaluation when negotiations are addressed. So hiring a personnel, I mentioned earlier, a board member is not allowed to, um, hire a relative of a board member or the chief of superintendent. If, um, the relative already works in the district, the administrator cannot have any focus of direct or indirect over that person. So that can be quite challenging day to day. A board member may also not seek court in playing matters concerning superintendent or any supervisor in the chief of command from their relative up to the name superintendent. And a board member then would not be able to participate in search, selection, or the annual, um, superintendent evaluation, right? Because if you have a family member and this person is over that, that family member. Next. Selective ordering, um, this just lays out for future reference, whether you may or may not participate in selective ordering based on relationships and involvement with the local or even if they say why, um, next one. It is not necessarily a bad thing to get supported by perhaps your local union, your link in the board, but you should not then sit at the negotiations table with any fear of that, you know, support, because it, it could look like, um, a poor year for your community and you don't have a great background, questions about that. Next one. So impact on committee assignments, if you have a votes in front of the district, first case was the president has a child who's in instructional system, and because of that, one way the president gets to create committees, the attorney can follow up to the chair, committees can sit in on those committees, but when you have a child working in the district, you now cannot, the president, participate in any of those things, anything that, um, it says limited to, including but not limited to, personnel committees, negotiation, instructional, finance committees, because pretty much the, David's very, you know, did right. And not president, but a board member, and you have a family member, very similar, that was what was assigned. So it's important to just be aware of that, um, they may not be able to do now, you know, come on boards, and it's just important that we also for each other, we're standing for that, okay? Next one. Advice of council, votes for penalties. So if a board member is bound to be in violation, um, at times, it will say, well, I asked my board attorney, we're not legal advice, and I'm told to debate these. So important to understand that advice of council isn't really the defense, it can, if these words are in fact present, um, mitigate a penalty, so you cannot remove the penalty, you're still in violation, okay? So you would have had to ask for the advice prior to being the action, you would have had to, um, gotten the advice from clearly a board council, right? Not your husband, or wife, or his attorney, or any other anybody else, because they're not authorized to have it. All pertinent facts and circumstances have to be fully shared with the attorney who's going to take this advice, um, can't hold things back, so even there are things that are not to share with someone, but they look at, right? They have to have all the facts because their guidance is going to be based on all of the facts. And you have to comply with whatever their advice was, fully comply, so if there are more than, if there's more than one president, then you should, should not do, you have to be compliant with that. All those things are present, it may help to mitigate the penalty, but, um, it also may not, because it is very key specific, and they're looking past the employees, so the board always maintaining that confidence with the community. Next. Volunteering in schools, this is one that, um, we come across really regularly because, not surprisingly, board members are usually very involved in volunteering, and this is the biggest volunteer job they'll ever probably have in their community. Um, so the school ethics commission is not saying that it's bad that you volunteer. What they are saying is it's a degree, it's a degree of involvement with staff and students, and it's a degree of authority to give me some directions, um, and orders to both staff and students, and also to direct resources and programs. So it's really a question of the degree of your involvement outside of the, um, volunteering, right? And on the left, we see the topic, so we talked about earlier, how Caesar combined their action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. So if the volunteer activity is putting you with staff at heightened level, like where somebody that does a bill, you're a board member, boss of the school, you're a student everywhere, a staff member, because you're, well, president, there, you're a senior member of your staff, that that degree is going to cause, um, issues and concerns. B is not to administer the schools, so similarly, if you're taking over the responsibility of running things that we've learned maybe under the word view of staff members, is it being mounting, then that also is going to be possible violations. And C, or taking pride of action that may compromise the board, so if you are volunteering, participating in things in schools, and you're having conversations about board business with staff members, or you are becoming more, it's appearing to someone else that, you know, your close friends, right? It's not better than that close friend, by the way, I appreciate it, and I appreciate it, like, for you, honestly, but if you don't want to make people think that now there is something else happening that relates on that relationship, okay? So if we go to the next slide, it looks at things that are really inherently violations when it comes to volunteering. If you are, um, you know, spouse who moves from staff, and they're coming in to work on a theater program, and you're really actively participating with some of the students that are growing up, directing the students, and who knows where, what they do, what's on the point, that's an inherent violation because it's in conflict with your ability to be an objective manager of the board, okay? Leading a student club, and you did that before, very valuable to do, but you can't do it now as a board member because it's putting you in direct contact with regular students, and that kind of goes along with between decisions you now have to make later on objectively on going forward. And if you're a volunteer football coach, where you have a regular contact with both staff members and students, that's inherent violation. And things that are not inherent violations, which, you know, we do, we're out there, is at board members, you go to classrooms, and you read across America, or go and read, or participate in something that's open to everyone else to participate in, not just that you have a meeting with your board member. Um, and perhaps later on, we, you know, you read a classroom, and the next month, you're asking Shablon to trip, you're thinking Shablon's, it's not really, it's, it's really, right? You don't have every day involved in different activities, probably going to see why. If you are that parent who shows up and goes busting all musical equipment or sports equipment, and loads it, really not interacting with staff and students, you're just leaving or building sets when nobody's around, because you can, that's really not going to be probably seen as a violation. The one on the bottom, I will tell you, it's something that I would recommend, so you have your attorney to go over with you, which is involvement in your PCA, HSA, that you have here, um, because it really is a matter of degree, and your policy should really be clear, it's a direct phone letter, and not, you shouldn't participate in the board decision. Oh, I'm sorry, just on that previous slide, you don't, okay? Importantly, I think it's, you know, always important to surprise, so if you are going to schools to let superintendent's office know that you're going to school, and you produce committee with their company, or secretary, whatever, takes that information, what that, what that does is it also ensures that he's prepared, the staff members are saying, sometimes it's all in the building, right? Might not really be true, but he'll be able to respond and say, no, who's related to this or that, not to bear with it, um, and that doesn't underlie this department. So social media, I think on this slide, we can say things like, but, um, this is practical, right? We're all about on social media, but the school ethics commission really looks at the content and substance and contact, context, I'm sorry, of messaging, um, and whether it would make a member of the community, a reasonable member of the community, believe that you're seeking for the board, that's already in the board's opinion. And they look for a nexus between both positive and negative. So the first one, a member discussed with how any kind of disclaimer about a system policy that she knew to abolish, indicating it was reviewed on board council and proposed by board board members, really board business, um, and any reasonable member of the community, probably those who name and those that are on the board, will be hard to find a significant person to put in the board in that case, right? The other one is not, that is how the nexus that was a problem, because the board member just put up the picture of three people running for the board, and didn't even make a statement about both board and anybody, just, is there any people that these are the people up there with the date to go out? And, um, next one. So school ethics commission, um, provides suggested disclaimer for you to use, they actually provide it just this way, old and I call it, because they wanted to send out, you're not required to use it, but what this particular disclaimer does is in two parts. The first part, following statements are made in my capacity as a private citizen and not in my capacity of board, right, putting it out there. The next part, equally as important, these statements also, um, are also not representative of board, or as individual members, and solely represent my own personal opinions, because there was a situation where personally, it's the first part of that disclaimer, but it kind of left the impression that they know something and they're speaking for the board, right? They didn't really go that extra step, other people must agree, but then this person goes, this is out there, right? You don't really care about that, especially when it's something that hot topics, basically going forward for the business, you don't really care about that. Next one. So just what we want to prove is, you're not automatically protected, but he's in this disclaimer, then you look at the context and the impression that you leave with the community, um, you're not automatically in violation if you do something and you don't have this disclaimer, right? If you're saying, you know, a board member, a theater performance, given a night, wonderful, students did a great job, credit, really not going to be of any concerns on social media, not necessarily this kind of. And again, you don't have to use the exact wording, but I always caution that if an entity that is the one that's going to decide your future recommends that you use that disclaimer, you may want to consider this. So general guidance is that if a board, if a sitting board member has been recently elected or appointed and was using has been recently elected or appointed and was using social media to get on the board, they should cease using that social media since you're the incumbent number. Because prior to being a board member as a candidate, you are not defined by the rules of absence. You can really say whatever you want. And that will carry forward. So your three days conversations will now be kind of volatile on that account. So you want to stop using that, too, for one. Any social media that you have privately should not say in your little bit of little thing about me, if you were, "I'm a board member," right? You want to really not have that listed there. Be proud of them listed there. Like being sharing from your personal account, especially on things that are really not your business or not going to, by reason of number of public cause concern, are probably going to be fine. But importantly, board members should be refraining from having, being an administrator on a social media account. And the reason is that you're making a statement as an administrator by what you're proud to be on that page or what you don't allow to be on that page. So you are tied to all of the statements, every one of the dates that's there. Well, it's not allowed, right? And it's coming out of your inside, so you may want to avoid[680.44]
...before it does acceptable. And understand how we do that well is part of the C S A team, so they have to be able to speak. Um, consensus is really important to really build that environment where consensus is valued as opposed to just not having enough votes to get majority, right? We know the board business happens on majority, we don't go through it all the time, it's absolutely common. But are we in place where the norm may feel super considered, right? Because they are coming, making sure that others can be represented students that are serving. So inclusion varies among opportunities, um, there's always opportunities, but especially through your school boards, including professional training, um, attending county meetings. I'm not sure if all of you are aware that all county meetings have a component being done. Most meetings are able to come out and have dinner, be people, uh, the public districts, so you can share, you know, information and maybe what to do. Um, but you earn board credit for participating. You can't make it in person, you can do it from hybrid virtual, live virtual. Um, and certainly you can attend any one that you want to attend, doesn't have to be a union or a community, so you're able in that call if you're studying. Um, signing a yet there, if you're attending otherwise online, they'll have you tracked and you'll get board credit as an individual for that, and so you can offer certification for that as a part of the thing. Um, and you want to, you know, really always make sure that your training towards improving, you know, information, that we understand the information we've done with, but also knowing the government's structure, how we can, um, always continuously improve the way you do what we do as a student. Resource management and oversight, um, board report is great, and so nine, board reports communication with administration, board of the budget and planning and seize the process that is transparent and collaborative. And comment was made that community members have actually made statements of support that, so that's one that we should hear, we have to be prepared. The board should, um, consider revising the goal of oversight and control in the board 's process to ensure that the board supports the established district goals, goals being achieved. As I said earlier, right, it's not a function of the board's being the board, but to understand how the board was being created, um, that is aligned with the community and serving students of the district, and, uh, that the policies are being followed towards the board's process, and that things are hitting calendar dates, and you're having the, um, presentation in public, that public has access, and not only seeing it, understanding, you know, some goals of why you're doing them. Um, you want to engage with people that you use. The board also can be fine training for, uh, your role in referendum process, hopefully if you're considering, you're considering that path that was noted in, um, the self-valuation comments that you made, that we recognize that. Education, right, we have meetings of public, we have visiting, also the community can hear about functioning of the district. Um, but we also want to have opportunities for, um, the public to move in other ways. It's a responsibility to the board to ensure that their community channels are available to serve them, but it's actually a responsibility of the administration on how to manage that, right? Um, it doesn't come directly from the board, so just. Uh, so we have individual member. Pretty much our skills of how we feel we function as a board, um, and whether what causes the results in the eleven separate categories that we're gonna need. So putting board goals, I know that you, um, have had some discussions, maybe some things are kind of replaced, this is just men to make certain that we're already doing. Um, board goals are student-centered, which is very important. The board's person has first experience and uses these methods to serve students. Recommendation based upon comments is look for opportunities to extend, understand how to use the data in the decision-making, right? So that has been the goal, and the form to, um, to, um, to make sure that it's appropriately. Process, reward communication, especially open amongst health facilities or functioning or reaching out, is an area that we need to consider. You have established, we mentioned earlier about getting those meetings and then deciding whether or not you can leave, but also what sort of thing, also, you know, within twenty-eight hours of us, or four days, or three quarters, so that they're informed, you know, we want to just keep things consistent, so everyone, whether or not in the room feels that they understand what's happening there. Um, and of course, you know, the community is ready to make the recommendation for action, that that should be clearly noted in advance of the working, where everyone who asks for the action, right, is under the assumption that's happening. Also, just understanding, uh, especially sometimes when you're not everybody's there, just really being really clear about the line, that learning is confidential, and so they're ready to, um, share, transmit, to, you know, right? Board members may know stuff, but it's the board, that's what we're trying to do. So that's really just, um, the recommendation that's on your board, um, that you've done a lot of evaluation, and, uh, to ensure the community should feel that that's a lack of reason for speaking about, because we're saying that you are a perceived subject of the board. The action plans that are sent out are similar, probably actually, you know, exactly that, so we're trying to set the goals and act in terms of meeting the specific goals. Um, it would be important to have measures broken out of, you know, how will we know really that we've achieved those goals, right? Someone who is poor, margin of error, position goals, when you achieve one of those district goals in superintendence of automation process, you want to involve, you know, from the beginning, what will we consider as a goal in that, right? And then to collect the information. Similarly, we have board members who want to hold themselves accountable and say, how will we know we met our goal for this particular item? Um, who's responsible, what's our timeline, and really importantly, posting it, just the way these rules often get posted, so that the community is aware of them, and updating on a quarterly basis, just progress in terms of schools, so they stay at the board table alive, right, in the knowledge of the community. So that's really, um, the sum of that. So if there's nothing further, or if you have any questions for me? Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. So then we'll go into our board. Okay. Are you guys in the district goals? Did you guys set that yet? Any of you have a discussion about it?
Yes, we discussed it as administrative team. I sent it out today, draft goals, that we came up with, here's what I have, uh, here too, I can distribute that, we can discuss it. Um, it's just based on information about principles, you know, or, you know, everybody, um, wherever we see priorities moving forward. Why is, we're discussing now.
I say we do our goal, I just want to know if you guys, we can go over our goals first, and then we can go to yours. Okay? Okay, perfect. So, um, just to get started on our goals for our next year, um, you know, if you read over the goals from our previous year, I personally feel that we haven't really met those goals yet, I don't know if you guys agree with me or not. Um, so I do think we should consider keeping them, or elaborating on them, so that we can try to achieve them this year. Um, I don't know what you guys think, any input on that? Especially, let's talk about the first one. Engage in consistent annual professional development activities on an individual or collective basis to earn New Jersey School Board Master Board Certification, promote communication and community engagement. So, I think that we definitely need more participation as a board to get that Master Board Certification, so that's why I feel like we should continue with that goal.
What's the benefit to a master board certification?
I mean, I don't know if I can truly answer that question.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm trying to, you know, something, I know we have this goal, and I know the principle of why we want it, but is there, is there an element of attitude, or is it, I mean, is there, like, what can we articulate that makes this a board goal?
Part of it is showing that all of our board members have been trained properly and as we used it as a board, so it does look good as representing our entire district. That's one piece of it.
I think, too, Charlotte, like, we, we have certified board, and I think we're just a few quite short of becoming that master board, as having trained, and that was just, I forgot what the word is, but, but.
We're so close to short.
And I think it's just, you know, just to get there, because the previous boards, or the years, it wasn't, you know, like, to work to get there, that was the reason why it was a goal.
If we carry those credits as board, or we carry them through the going members?
As a board.
But it has to be the same numbers, so it eventually does know why, and I emailed her to see how far away you are, because she may be out of town. And then we said, you have to go for, like, board certification and every sense of law.
But we were only board certified like two years ago, with, with pretty much the same members.
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
It was one that I think you have then, or only have two years to get Master Board Certification, or for you to get recertified as a master, as a, like, board certification, and then get Master.
Did she respond to you?
I saw her answer. Okay. Because I thought I was answering this question.
No, we're just taking it.
Okay. Um, well, at this point, then I don't, we have to see if that even is, should we even be discussing it as a goal? We might have to go back to that one.
Or you may have achieved it. I think it's either you've achieved it now based on today's training, or it's out.
Because I know last year, a board chief, we asked Matt to do several throughout the year, so that we could get those, but it was a certain amount of hours. I don't, I don't think he came, I don't think he did any of the training.
He had this superintendent serve through school boards, and he could get credits for that.
We did get credit for that.
And then, um, one of the presentations that I believe fit it, I sent it, and he got credit for that. And so I thought he said after your retreat, like, today, that would be enough.
It would be a passive, if she wants to.
I don't know that she.
I did ask her to say it. I know, I don't know if she knows. So I feel like we have to go, we might have to come back to that one, because we may have the credits, which would be excellent. Um, okay, so we'll go back, we'll come back. I'll ask for a response tomorrow, and maybe I can email, or if she, if she can, I'll get to it, and I'll give you guys all the response to. Um, okay. And then the second one is enable more effective, more governance by enhancing consistent ongoing communication from committees to the board as a whole. Um, again, I think we can keep this to continue, I know we've had some issues, uh, throughout this year, but I think we can work on it and improve on it. Um, I'm gonna be honest, though, I also like doing, I think somewhat putting this action plan template into our board goals, because I can tell you, I know the response is going in here, or actual response, and I will send that out, I didn't know she sent it to me. But I think if we could, throughout the school year, see where we have been, so we're not waiting to arbitrate to see if we achieved the goal in a sense. I don't know what you guys think about that. We can all contribute to this, it's not like we're the first one. So what do you guys think about the second goal? Do you think we should continue with that goal? Any, Joe, here?
Okay, I, I, I don't really want to comment too much on the other one, but, um, yeah, Master Board Certification, because I have some thoughts about that.
That's all.
I think, in my life.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think the community wants to want, you know, everything, and now we can talk about establishing a standard committee, um, monthly, whatever, two months, whatever it is for every committee, it's easier to catch. One of the hardest parts is trying to, you know, get everyone on a common date to have these committees, and I think it would prompt us, it's in my calendar, the picture, you have committee meetings coming up, which is just, I can put down, and I think, I thought we watched a superintendents that do it, it's kind of like a standard thing, that they just do it, and I think that will lead me to get some practice, um, you know, community events and everything else that, like, to worry about, you know?
Yeah, because we have some committees that only need to meet, so I think we need to definitely force that more, so that we can have a, even if it's right before one of our board meetings, just for a half hour, just to discuss something if possible, but yeah, I think that's important, we can do that. So I think we should keep number two, if anyone agrees to that. Um, does anyone want to add to any new goals for this year?
Can I go back to one? It's, it's over, so you either got it or you either took it or cheated.
Okay, so we'll, we'll find out tomorrow.
We'll be out. I'll find out tomorrow, and, and because I, you were.
I feel that because we, we don't have our normal field rep that we had, I feel there's been a drop in discussions about these things, um, and I feel like she's covering, so she might not know either, so she'll have to look into it. I will try to get an answer to you guys as soon as possible for that. But at this point, it might not be a goal at this point, because we're not gonna start all over yet, we gotta start from the beginning to go back.
Do you, do you know when our, our, our school boards were officially, was no longer the school boards?
No.
So either do I, that's what I was getting at, I'm sure I'm not seeing for the first one, but like, you know, I looked through the July expenses, made sure to check everything thousand dollars to them, and where we are, and, um, you know, I'm just like, I never, and maybe you did as president, I didn't know that we did that rep.
I didn't know either. So to be very transparent, the only reason I found out is because when we were doing the C S A evaluation, I texted Matt Lee at night, no response, the next day Jean emails me.
Did anybody else get an email?
No one got an email, yes. You did?
I guess.
I did not get an email, and I checked.
I actually went to the county, then the person sat next to Matt Lee, and found out two days later, he was down, and said. When was that? When, was it May or June, the last, the last meeting in the house, I was, sat by next to him, have a grand conversation, and then they may mention that.
From, just, not totally get it, it is, but I think he just left abruptly, so I don't, and I don't even know if she knows. But my issue with the situation is that she didn't even know, I didn't get a notification, no one, they didn't get notified, and I feel like because I texted him, that we got notification, which I did have an issue with, and I explained to her, like, we should have had more communication about this. Even the new, like, evaluation for self-worth, it was not communicated clearly to us, so I do feel the ball was dropped on their end recently. Um, so yes, I had no idea, and I don't think I would have known, I don't even know if she would have reached out to me about our retreat had I not texted Matt.
So to Charlotte's point, I shut, I said, I had thoughts, not really, not really. So, we're sitting here trying to achieve Master Board Certification, but with school boards, but school boards doesn't really know what our practice, no longer, so I'm kind of not in love with this whole thing, is my default, so I'll, I'll refrain from, or prefer to, like, we're spending money and a budget crunch to have school boards, yet when we need them at the end of the year, our rep resigns and will be less, I, that's my concern. I just don't know if it makes sense to even continue. That's, that's not.
And I had a, there was a conversation with her last week about this, because of that, kind of, we weren't informed of anything, and we're not informed, and we have to, like, ask first to find out, which is not the way it's been. Uh, so I agree, I don't.
I show a value. Yeah, well, it was discussed, because I can mention budget crunch, we are a budget crunch, so every line I, I worked on, it's definitely not, it was, it was discussed, um, we have to, how, so we're, we're, so, 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 July expenses, you know, made sure to check everything right, and, and I guess that's our news?
Yeah. Right. And not even someone from school boards contacted, we had, like, I just don't know why someone higher up didn't contact, it's like what I said to her. Like, I'm not, I said, I'm not upset with you, you know, she thought I was, but I'm like, you should have, someone else should have let us know.
Tell me, tell me, do you know any district that doesn't have school boards?
Say it again.
Do you know any district that doesn't have school boards? I don't know. Do you have? I thought you did. Do you have school boards? Yeah, I'm, oh, I didn't know.
So that's what that requirement?
I don't think it's a requirement.
I can see that, I see that.
Again, I don't know anybody that doesn't have it, you know, the superintendent circles, they're all draw, so I don't know what that means.
But can we not be, it's a question of.
Right, right. Sorry. The point that I was trying to make is, we could have Master Board Certification, and if we do not, it is not changed, anything about board, that's not, that's a deal.
It's not, I mean, I'm saying, yes, but like, yeah. Oh, my God, this is great. Yeah, that's great. That doesn't work either. Students have to. The other one's plugged in, it doesn't work. I just look, I just, that one's not working, it's not. Okay, I, I, I. So let's, you want to bring up our possible board goal?
Yeah. Um, of course, like, a few weeks ago, like, I raised my hand out, and she asked, you know, like, everybody had an idea of this report of goals, and then we had talked about two that we had, did we, we really didn't feel that we achieved them, so one one was a burning, and I thought this one would be easy to attain, and I think it would be good, um, I know in the past, we had, like, kids coming every month, and presentations and things like that, and I really, like, carried towards that, but then, it's just good for the students, and we as board, as well, like, schools, as well as the, like, we'll see, we'll continue to see what's going on. So I put this together about engagement and awareness of district programs. The Board of Education will enhance its understanding and support of the district's academic, extracurricular, and athletic programs by inviting staff and for students to share instructional strategies, programs, technological tools, and any instructional resources during local board meetings. This initiative would aim to celebrate innovation, foster collaboration, and strengthen the board's connection to the day-to-day experiences of students and staff across all schools in the district. And I just felt this was an easily exemplified goal for us.
What was the goal itself?
But I, everything I just read, like, to have, pretty much, to have board programs come in monthly, like, if there's, I don't know, like, yeah, showcasing student achievement or initiatives, like, celebrating teams, things like that, but make it a regular thing, not just the ones that lie. And.
I, I feel like even before you, we should have a more consistent schedule of students and staff presenting, and like, first of all, kids love it too, like, you know, and I think it's, yeah, people want to see it, um, and it has kind of dropped off in two years, and we've been through a lot of transition. I do think it'd be a good goal, I think it'd also bring the community into our needs more, you're getting people to sit here because we can see what kids present, so I don't think, I think it's a good goal to have, um, what do you guys think?
I mean, I think in general, yeah, trying to understand what it is, is, I'm not even ready, I just, I just.
Could you shorten it maybe to like a more simple?
Yeah, I'm trying to, what, what the goal itself is, like, to bring, like, if you could read it again, if you don't mind?
Well, I guess, the Board of Ed will enhance its understanding and support of the district's academic, extracurricular, and athletic programs. Um, the initiative would aim to celebrate student achievement, collaboration, and strength of the board's connection to, and basically so that we're seeing as a board what is going on in our schools, we're not just hearing that, we're seeing that.
We need to cut it though, like, to say that in like, one sentence.
That, that's what I'm saying, I like it, I'm just trying to understand.
We need to.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's, without, without, right, so I think it's enhance, you know, our understanding of programs, you know?
Full of point.
And then, yeah, because, because what you're saying also goes to that we want, yeah, it is actually a piece of.
That's also something to do with that board's, like, I think, yeah, that's a fact, you know, it's a goal, and then the second, and I just have, how, what do we, we're gonna get to. Just so we can see it, I feel like we need to see it. While we do that, and we try to, the board, does anyone else have any other possible goals for this year?
Yeah, right, except I was, I also, because they, you know, it's, something, you know, it's like.
Well, that was the question.
Yeah, I know that was something that was, that was a question, and, and, you know, a lot of stuff. It doesn't go in the board that, I should have started, so I think the materials there will be, just carries somebody that's important, so.
I believe, so in, in board evaluation, I think one of the things that I put was specifically about, you know, things like, um, self improvement. I don't know if it's, if it's exactly a board goal, like, we can make it board, or maybe can, I'm not sure, but like, we're open, but I don't have specific focus on facilities. I don't know, I'm not saying we're not doing it, and I want to strike, and we're from the back, I don't know if it's a code report goal to, you know, make facility improvements. Is that, you want to try to say it? We have this part of our district, and that's what I meant, so I don't know if that's really something that needs to be additional, not a board goal, or, or, if it can be, you know, but I really think that we kind of, identifying, at minimum, to identify facility improvements. If, if, if every word becomes a goal, it's not a goal that's like, okay.
Well, I was just gonna say that, like, it's you.
And the goal lights the fire to start the process, and then perhaps the next goal in the following year is we've put a long work, and board decides we have to continue that process, um, and I'll, in my evaluation, I literally refer to it as the, you have to discuss, when you're talking about A rep, or the D rep, and, like, it's another ten, we have to be more specific in, even this whole action, and that's a perfect case, action, we do the task of it, we have concerns for the cost, and the time, the reaction, and the budget, we're not any closer to getting it, so I think that maybe a preliminary aspect of that process would be a big goal for us to look into, again, we could be, we could be superheroes, and start the process, and then make it a goal, we don't really intend it, we have the, you know, we have to refresh our architects versions, bunch of stuff like that, so I think that would be really a goal.
I think if we make a goal, we'll work toward it, and if we don't make a goal, we won't work toward it, so I think we, if we all agree, which I think we kind of all agree, unless we're everyone, but facilities is the issue, a referendum is gonna be something we need to discuss, so I think we should try to make a goal. But we're in a way where we can't, we're not gonna say we'll achieve it one year, we work toward this goal. Um, somebody needs some help now, we're gonna write that part too. Um, first, the only pad was to communicate community engagement, district line, or.
Should we leave it just as referendum, or just leaving facilities? Like, we could both, we're not just leaving.
Yeah, facility improvements, because I feel like if we leave it just as referendum, we may never achieve that, but if we work towards facilities in some other way too.
Like, could, could we, could we somehow create something where we're identifying, you know, the hierarchy of facilities, like, to itemize, like, what is priority, like, immediate priority?
Well, the committee has done that.
We have an active document, yeah, that has, that lists it in priority with the cost.
Right, but I meant now translating that as a group to achieve or not.
I don't know if we want to be that specific, though. I think, I, I mean, I'm not saying, I think we can get more, not so specific, maybe more achievable, because we've been able to, not like we want, that we need to post, or maybe smaller ones, which is what happened years ago, when we were going for a referendum, I remember Lanes was a thing, we did it without using a referendum, like, we achieved some of these goals without having a referendum.
What's your view of that?
I mean, I know, we always, like, you know, chip off some of it, so, that's why I don't want it to be so specific, but that's up to you guys to, it's not my decision, if you guys think. I mean, I like the wording of that, but not just putting referendum, putting, like, ongoing facilities or something.
And, you know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not articulating, sort of, just, you know, Stephanie and Pete, they were really part of this stuff, I just meant to literally put the front list, you know, to remind us, everybody, we're looking at, you know, you know, our list, what are our goals, and are we actively, or. And are we actively working towards shipping rates and facilities? I'm not in any way, shape or form saying that anybody's not doing a good job of this, or addressing it, I just meant as, our goal, to, to like, heck, by, by next year at this time, like, how far do we get? Do we have?
I agree.
I, I mean, I'm not articulating it, but that's what I'm trying to say is, like, I think facilities is, I don't think that the person in this room is concerned with it. That isn't, you know, trying to formulate an opinion on how to do it, whether it's a referendum or not, that's all the same. How do we look at this, every single need is a work of this, and maybe it's a policy for a better time. That's not for us. That was the one, the board goal that I, I was, how do we really focus that on? We know that we, we've identified the purpose, and how do we show the way of that? And I think we already, um, are writing the goals, we're building more like a goal for our financial plan. We, we are going, when we audit ourselves for next year, we have to make significant financial decisions to find money somewhere. Now, obviously, facilities, we can do part of that as well, but there's also programmatic elements. Right now, Tony knows this as well, no Title I, no Title II, no Title III, no Title IV, we have a couple of hundred thousand dollars, a couple of hundred, but if not coming back to us, then I would say it is a hundred percent over. Like, if he did, it's, uh, if we're launching a targeted charter for the service, it's, that hasn't come down the pipeline. And yet, we're banking on lawmaking, one point eight million accounts, we're banking on moving people to, that we're not getting, moving services to, we're not getting. So that is like, I don't know, there's two financial things going on right now, there's two paths that have, are there, one is facilities, desperate to move. And I predict it's definitely, you know, timing is wrong. We are going into, it's probably take two years to get out of the hole, or through year one, we might need another year to get out of the hole. And I keep coming up with the second question, can do a second question, and they refer it more time. Now, there are ideas that we have to avoid the second question, but it's major decisions on the table that we are struggling to work at, to accomplish. So I look at it more of an annual strategic plan, including the referendum, including program, and like, including if the title, if we don't come back, we're cutting back, we have to accomplish. Those are major pipeline. I'm nervous that now we're going full fledged into a referendum, we had a, a referendum, Stephanie and I, with the architect called Overthings. And then Mark Seventeen was happening, sitting back, sales chat, all that, and add the budget, it's a couple of things, we have to do this again. How, how do we juggle both huge things in the air and be confident that we can get through? So that is, that is my operation. I would love a referendum, I would love it, I think a simple referendum with a major facility needs, I mean, like, you know, don't be right now honest, it'll be twenty dollars a month. Or something like that, and add us, you know, realistic windows, ceilings, page bag, parking lots, that are like, we, we just like Stephanie and the two roots. They're not sexy, we needed the roots, and they have done it, we have to encapsulate ourselves, like, sound, so many, and then work towards the program, and elephants down the road, and Mark, Mark, and science lab and stuff like that. That I love, but I don't know after the borough just reassessed everything, tax was what, now we're in it again. Possibly a second question, can I refer, you know, not that I want a second question either, I think we navigate that out, but it is on my mind, probably get a board goal or a financial goal. I'm not opposed to language with a referendum, so we'll lead to it, you know, a star, guidance, reminders, I don't have that at all, or I think it'd be a better interest of the referendum's inclusion.
I, can you type up that old one and then we can change it so that it works for us this year? If there aren't, like, facilities or whatever, that's possible. I know we have to go back to the first two, the other one, but I want to just. I feel like I need to see it so we can adjust it.
What is the specific one, is the board goal, is it to actively pursue facilities for money?
Yeah.
Just like, actively, no, like, or look at, like, we, yeah, we visit.
On a regular basis, I think we want to do more consistently, and I think that's the, right, consistently working toward that goal and discussing it. I don't want to merge the roof, right? I don't like that.
It's immediately, that's from.
That's why I want to see it so we can change it, that's kind of why I need to see it. Maybe it's more something like towards the district financial, as opposed to. Say, the district financial, regarding facilities, as opposed to an urgent requirement. Yeah, I think the merger is facility upgrades.
I don't even want to say a merge, I like.
You know what, I don't like that, what about just facility upgrades?
They're already hired, they're not engaged in efficient planning towards facility upgrades, whether it's via referendum or not, like, they're merging, they're there.
Right, they merge. Like, we, but do we need a community engagement part now? That's not really what, it's us, it's not a community, it's not a referendum like that part, right?
It's like, they're like, that's where it needs to be up.
Oh, yeah. I think this, I think this year, this will come, I'm going to suggest that facilities, I mean, uh, come on the July, you know, to talk about this, I'm going to tell you. So we need to offer a community, have a community discussed here, and we have to, um, I guess, we are, there, I think the plan that we have now, with the referendum in 2020, is grandiose in terms of what we can realistically offer to the board. We have to just kind of, that's part of, I think the administrative team now has to just start tracking all things, and create something that's feasible, so the facilities, and say, okay, what do you guys think? Or we'll start with, well, us, and say, listen, what do you guys think for the community, you know, what is feasible here, and what needs not be, so we can start paring down, what we have to do. Facilities, I mean, I can't, it is, I have to now just tell people, in terms of, I'm having a minute, that be careful of how we're marking up, like, brush, or, 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 major markers. So certainly like that, when the Berkeley, when the Concos, you know, that we fill in, we fill in, we fill in, it doesn't make sense for the districts to do it outright, because we do it for a referendum, we get thirty something percent back. Every million, we take a thousand back, so it doesn't make sense for us to start just putting that as money. So, I am definitely okay with communication, community engagement, district management, so the upgrade, after the board level, it's going to come to the board. We're going to have, discussions, even surveys, we have a survey already that we can go through from the board, that should go out to the community as well, attend them while we start talking, it's not like that, it's, but. These referendums take a long, long time, it's not like it happens overnight, so another discussion is, while there's referendum, there's something that we might take, have, or check the way out as well. So we can have some progress as we unfold with the referendum. And that's all in line with, I'm telling you, right now, it's all in line with how we compete with or combat. I don't know, there are deficits here, next year, and then I think we get different, I think we're getting extra, but this is the same, the referendum has to happen next year. It's the same, we have to start the process, look at it, so when we are confident already, we can perform.
So we're comfortable with number two, wait, are you?
Yeah.
Better.
I think it's, okay.
Do we think that the referendum is, we need to address this?
Oh, it's just capital improvements, I assume, I don't think there's a referendum for programmatic, that would be a second question, so a second question, or would it look like, program, like, I'm not saying, like, let's say, some districts are saying, oh, we got to cut sports. Just to a second question, and they go out and take that, so that's more programmatic, or a referendum is more for the capital. They try not to, they don't face, my right to money on that, you don't, you don't do the face.
So she's gonna write, like, the blur, kind of, what, all set, and we can shorten it or? Who's that? Oh, yeah, I can see that, I'm trying to. Basically, there's a, number three, four, we're doing that as one?
Oh, I just wrote three, but I think the most important is that it's more, more, we're just, I'm doing.
Yeah, I feel like you could put a word for word, and, your needs, make three for one.
I feel like, um, how else to do an achievement and community engagement, but something like, I would, I don't know, we have a, you know, the thing is, right? How would he as a board, he would still achieve? I know, that's why I don't think that's.
I think it's more celebrate student achievement, raise awareness of that student achievement.
Well, the way I thought of it was that the board will enhance its understanding and support of the districts, and then what's. Yeah, just to celebrate what the council, not just for us, but for the community, and see what's going on, for the donations, for the, for the, for the. Yeah, like, one year, I remember like, one year, it was a student council, but that happened one year, that gave it to him. You know, it's like, these things that we do once in a while, which make the meetings fun, I mean, like, they're, you know, also, we had the administrators, they went to a professional development, and they presented on it. And then we saw what they learned at their presentation, like, I think the community needs to know more what we're spending our money on and how it's affecting our kids and staff. I mean, I enjoy it as a board member, so I think it's memorable to people that they see it. It is very memorable, um, so I think it's, and it makes them feel important, like, the kids are here. So I think that's, I think that's a great goal, because I think it also engages the community to come to our meetings, watching it, and, you know. For me, it's just more establishing a regular routine of having that presentation, and not just sporadic, that's how I feel. Well, we gotta change that, it's like, that would be cut out. That's too much, just my, no, 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 I know, I know. We have to shorten it in a way that's like, to the point.
So I think, I don't think we need that second sentence that starts this initiative, it's too, yeah, that was like an explanation.
This initiative, yeah, okay, because that's just the explanation of why we're doing it, so we can get rid of that part, it's like.
Well, like, yeah, I think like, at the end of athletic programs, right? By inviting staff, like, that, that's, then we get how to, like, the goal is the goal, like that, you have to figure out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're not the examples, we're not the examples.
Again, I know for myself, right, I think one of the things that I try to do is, is attend a couple of different sporting events each season, right? Like, show a sign, you know, show a volleyball, show a wrestling match, and I don't know exactly which one I'm gonna get to be sure, but I try to, of course, the year, get to as many different athletic events that I get, even twenty-one. Just observe, like, what's going on, you know, just in the stands, you know, on, on the sideline, it's been insane, just to be part of the unit, part of the different events, and, you know, I, I would like to, I mean, throw a club, I try to, you know, different, like, in person. So I think as board, if we could collectively get to as many as possible, maybe it could be a potential goal for us, like, if I get to volleyball and cross country, and Tony gets to football and soccer. Maybe we get to, as, as a board, we get to every season, you know, maybe, in a way. Right, and, I got you, and a lot of us are already doing it, but like, you know, and say, we just football and, you know, you know what I mean? Like, maybe if we as a group can get to every piece, you know, like, great, you know, including, you know, across America, including like, all.
So it's reciprocated, like, we want the community to come here and we're gonna all.
Right, right, it'd be a great goal for us to get out to everything, you know, it's one of us to say.
That could be the actual, I mean, please. Are we good, wait, does anyone else have any other goals they want to, other board, I mean, new goals outside of those for this year? No, I wouldn't do more than three, but I just, we didn't, I want to hear from everybody. We need to do a recap, no, we need to do a recap first.
All right, so we're gonna go over the twenty-four, twenty-five goals real quick, I know, like, the new summary of evaluation superintendent, so it's pretty much the same evidence, you know, we're actually giving more than we did. Uh, the first one was a guideline, find structures, regulate the kind of buildings with the entire district, control personnel, positive and supports on a place for the district to function efficiently and effectively. And there was three criteria that we put under that, it wasn't on the board agenda, but like, kind of action items, and, uh, reestablishing or refine as needed, just make sure that it's been completed. That was, you know, some of it, you could see, basically it took the old one, it, it measures, and I have a picture, you can see it. So this is the new one. And the old one was this.
You want me to pass them around so you can see the difference?
And so now it's, now it's editable, you know, and we can change as needed, it kind of just pretty much establishes who evaluates who, who answers to who, so there's a whole question. Um, the job descriptions, they're still in progress, the whole athletic department has done, um, the A, work has done, so random others, but there are some areas that have no job descriptions. Um, yet we're working on, it's going to be in this late August, September, because they mostly have to do with clubs and stipend issues, and there's, there's no descriptions on how frequent they need, you know, the length of duration, and responsibilities, or anything connected to that, so that's something that principals know, we have been working on a template, because once these people get hired, when people get hired, they're gonna have to fill out this template. Or the expectations, what we're seeing is, without that job description, then somebody else takes it over. Unless they are informed by the previous person what's going on, they have no idea, they gotta make up their own thing, so the job descriptions are even more important, risk type of position, we're more turnover, turnover. So they will be done by now, but a club description will be done, you know, this is, yes, we will, we'll do it next year. Value weights, standardized clarity efficiency, and I believe various components of the value system, you know, we're doing that, we're doing it online, so SGOs, PDPs, observations can all be on one platform. We also got room works now for counselors, sports staff, nurses, that will all be on this as well, because as of this year, some nurses will be, be done narrative style, or they're working through the trial platform, so it's all different, same counselors, and that's all been on one platform. So it's all different, same counselors, it's all been on one platform, push a button, captain, that is a goal that we need to do tomorrow. Five lines of it, all the persons that onboard and move. So that's the first goal. The second goal, evaluate established structures for communication. Uh, the first one was create distributed board notes. Board notes, uh, feedback, what do you enjoy that? But they're least informative, and it keeps you engaged and, uh, you know, know what you voted for and is voted for. And we also devised board agendas to make it more transparent to the public. And I think that we received less questions from the public in regards to, um, items on the agenda for clarification. So I think that all less of it, I appreciate the support that. The district website, I encourage you to go on the district website, because it has now changed as of today. And you can see, uh, we had a lot more colors and pictures that won't be involved. Um, in January, our other one expires, we've created like a stock app. And now, I'd like to thank, you know, the county department, uh, Mayor, and Ron Watson, and, and Geraldine, and St. Joe's, my secretary. Right, how it's not, we do this and search on websites, so you can see the color pattern, uh, we have students on there. We have, uh, it is, I think it's, it's pretty nice. It's not, not bad, right? And we'll only get better, we have pictures in front of the building. And so now, what's going to happen is that new website will triple to the school websites. And that will be kind of like, hey, here's the goals now that we're looking for. And we already have ideas to expand on the website, how's about the districts, provide the number, and also program and program highlights. So if you come to view the website, you can see like, oh, we just put the goal, it's about the sports, the, uh, co-education curriculum, uh, everything. So I see you looking at it right now, Cheryl, it's not bad, right? Not bad, okay. So that's a constant, that's a major, major goal. And so now, this is, uh, talking about board. Okay, identify, take, remember, use parent square. And parent square for most partners they hit, according to the principals, they really like it. Uh, they do for, I think thousands of posts have been done over the course of the year. I like it, I'm not a social media guy, because it's, it's hard to control what's out there. And so parent square allows me to approach things as needed, quickly when needed, in terms of the bird or bar fire, and get out there quickly. Our seventeen minutes, there's constant communication, and obviously the monthly newsletters. I mean, I put the pictures in there, and what I need to say to the district, and I think we can leverage that. The board can help them understand how our parent square. The hard part is getting a lot of people to read it, and read the whole thing, but I think that, what we do, that's important too. Um, social media, we evaluated it, Berkeley, Kings don't really use social media. Mr. Galala at the middle school uses social media, it's a brand, it's a parent square, and then high schools don't really use social media. I'm not a social media guy, I just, parent squares is good for us. I think the high school, Ken and Ed will be using it, work with sporting programs and stuff like that. Uh, maybe a nice one is student clubs. Social media is there. Third, evaluate the fine current practice and development for us for social emotional needs. We have a lot, a lot of social emotional learning, the district has learned about elementary level, the second step program, because they're doing it daily basis. Um, being used behind neighbors, which is a compliment, maybe, a little initiative to this. I don't know if you saw, there was number two, they did this, you know, organization foundation, Berkeley, Kings, it's huge for, uh, video. Did you see that thing? We have, Berlin, it's like the same, it's awesome. Uh, the whole school, like, Rockford, it created this dog, it's a tree, and they don't know what it was to the kids, but it's all about the community, they come and have a simple picture. Um, the D E O, the tremendous amount, they brought three separate desk readers for S E L this year. They were making, they were giving a year, uh, doing vice briefs, and also did one S E L comment or question. Had they been in every lesson, uh, for every lesson, teacher type of, for the initiative. Uh, the high school uses Fresh Start, create desk readers, um, buddy mentorship program. There's a lot of subjects used to this convention this year, and do for rest, toward mental health and self-esteem for all of the students. And that's about it. And then we also had, uh, through title funds, you know, we said, also, the name's, uh, Jenny Mills, to come in, to teach at S E L throughout the district. And actually did S E L at Berkeley, at Berkeley, for Berkeley, they're interested in this. It's a huge system, it's a little confusing. So that is the twenty-four, twenty-five goals. Did your corporate have any questions? Oh, good. Yeah, any feedback you have with the district project, everything you see there, I don't say stolen, but it had been stolen from other websites. So if you see anything on the website, yeah, just let me know. I actually went to St. Joe's, very Catholic, to see their website, because they use it as recruited tools too. And that's part of what our website has to be like, that's where we came up with the program highlights on the bottom, and show me, and everything else. A lot of people, they come to the project, they go, oh, they have this, well, they have this, they have this. And so we're trying to be more, uh, by the numbers, and St. Joe's actually has a really interesting product numbers that we're working at. To expand what we did, so in time, that will evolve, um, but that is, we've launched now, so you can kind of see, uh, the fruits of it. Alright, as for the draft goals for twenty-five, twenty-six, um, if you look at, there's goals and then there's priority tasks associated with it. I like doing that, just, it keeps me in line with that specifically what we have to do with the district. Uh, the first one is a no-brainer, I think, in Zodasta, I did in day one. Flapped a bunch of binders on my table, like, this is a very hard, okay. Um, so over the course of last year, I already remember O E M, just to try to have that book at our, um, saving security event in the district. And we have them in place, and we are safe and we are secure, and I want maybe, we're not, but there's a uniforming that has to be changed. There has to be one district manual, a little bit, they're not it, that have school in it, with the reunification and everything. So that, I think that's a no-brainer as a goal, and that will be done by day first, the police, O E M, district staff. And, uh, just give you, pretty much, a binder, attached, and everything in it, and each school that just did a portion of it. But this also includes, um, emergency plans for athletics after school. So if that is actually one of the most vulnerable, that is something that a lot of parents do not have, that Mr. President Deli has already started working on, to incorporate into this. Maybe about vulnerability, that's it, the doors are open, um, security at a minimum, and so we should be prepared for that. So that is goal, um, goal two.
Also, you may not himself, but what is goals? Oh, that's what I was wondering about.
I'm sorry, I'm hoping why, there's more, I guess, like, three. I don't know which one you're eliminating, though, like, I, I look at the whole, and I have to kind of go off, and I just, and, and even if you, if, even if you only, if we go to three, or four, you're gonna, you're gonna have all four of them on your desk, looking at your own show, and you're ready. So by limiting.
Well, I'm questioning that goal too. Is, is attendance an issue, is that?
So attendance, so data, so we, by the skin of our teeth, were not, did not have to an action request. So the district releases, I guess it's October, or whatever, for, uh, school-wide attendance rates and product absenteeism. And if your tech, schools ten percent are over, you have to go to action management, that's, one of our schools is like a nine percent. So throughout the course of this year, I just did data this, this time, we have one school that had nine percent, and the elementary schools are five and six percent, and the high schools are seven percent. For the district, perhaps, you have seven percent. Um, that's a lot, and product gap did eighteen absences about, that's what the state, so we already talked about decreasing absenteeism, helping that out, policy, policy committee that we're going out from. Private, private, eighteen, sixteen, uh, just under what the state wants. Um, there's also higher part of the state, that should help a little bit, but I think education practices, or the summer, where you start working on, there's orders of that, so for the trust development. Ideas to really target kids and their families about, listen, you've been absent last year, you're on our radar. So anybody who's like twelve or fourteen absences last year, we would like to get that, and the correspondence, this summer, to be, you're on our radar. If you were absent fourteen times, a lot of times the family don't know, and be aware, like, these are the penalties, these are the consequences, you know? Here's resources that can help you, you can help contact us, and then have action close to that. So we are going to do this, and you want to be attendance, and we don't want to get to that type of situation, I really, I really, I don't want to actually. We actually have certain pockets of our population, multi-language languages, especially in populations, in certain schools that are over the ten percent. Since there's a certain population in the school with it, you're going to have to have an action, you know?
Yes, we don't want to get to that percent, but more importantly, I think we have to really get across to, um, parents and families, right? It's important that our kids have to carry this in mind, right? Like, it's not just suburban, it's because if they're not there, they can't run, right? Like, any job in the world, you start a good job, maybe you're lucky, you get a week's vacation, maybe you get five personal days, or six days. That's ten days a year, you're on the road, okay? Like, because those are lifestyles, the trends, and you get up as a workforce, you're not gonna be able to be absent seventeen or eighteen times from your job, you know? Whether it's in four years or eight years, sixteen years, you know, you're gonna be a workforce. And it's like, really important, they understand, statistically, I think a buddy might, there's letters that put, like, statistically, five is the magic number, right? You don't want to go over five, then there starts to be, you know, problems. And I was talking to Mr. Root, ask that back, and there's some, and they're on the tradition, previously, like, in Tuesday, you know, actually started bringing absences to college sentences. And so, and to my view, it's, well, they desire to be data, but they're only absent a year, you know? You know, I thought that was pretty interesting, shows to the, the direct correlation to attendance, school achievement, and what if you're ten percent? And I think that just has to be, be aware, I think the newsletters would be a path to that, where I do mention attendance, you were there once already, and I was just, some parents actually came up to me, like, I saw what he said about attendance, alright, I'm glad. So I think that that is a path, and also, by that, district goal, go constantly, you know? And not just we have statutory requires that we have to do, but maybe go.
Like, um, you said, sometimes we're not willing to, 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 to.
No, no, so they, they know when their kid's absent, wait, I don't know if they understand how many times you had them, you know? Like, if you're absent just two times a month, that doesn't seem like a lot, well, instead of twenty days, and then your.
I think the other obligation, and it's worth, it's more than, you know, all of us parents know that, the school, the district excuses certain absences, the state is not. So the doctors, or whatever, turn in, excuses it within the district, and still reports as an absence for the state. So people say, okay, my kid's grade is not affected by the attendance, how can I be chronically absent, you excuse it? You excuse it as a district, but from state's perspective, it's when your backside is receiving, and unless the struggle might. In fact, when all these are excused, that's great, that maybe satisfies the grade, and good for you, if you missed twenty-five classes, so you're taking the grade. But I think that's part of the discipline, it's, but wait, I'm, I'm getting knocked, this is what's about, from state's perspective, is if you're not in the building, you take it more than two times, you're chronically absent. And it, it's always been there, but since COVID, it's gotten greater and greater, and like, as the philosopher said, oceanitis, you better write it. Local, it's a miss, it's not fun to do, and so, yeah, previously, you know, it really takes a lot of communication with parents, because depending upon the age of the child, their time in practice, okay? They don't realize the impact on us, that if your test scores aren't as great as you like, maybe one of the things to look at is how long this is, and what are you doing today? So I think that's one, that's a disconnect driver, I think, to this, everywhere, more so than actually the grades, we have to really apply to grade, but I think that's a part of the problem. We might just, like, we've got, they're becoming, you know, it's totally like, I was talking to a policy committee beginning, where there's some districts that are going away from this, we've got. And they just say, we get sixteen absences, eighteen absences, and that's it, and once you go over that, because it is, it is good for children. I can speak to other principal, I'd have given two absences, but they'd have thirty doctor, thirty days of doctor, something like that, I've still got no choice in that, you know?
And, and just, what about the continuity of education in classroom, in the teacher, right? Because if you have several kids who are often not in class, right? It may be that those kids need to go for extra help and figure out what to do, but the reality of this, we have, we have teachers who are gonna be teaching that lesson more than one time, to make up for it, and then, and then, what is the, the, the disgrowth of that in class? And then that translates to test scores, and, you know, so it's not just about being safe guidelines, it's about each kid getting the education they're supposed to get. And a teacher being able to, to give them that education, because the kids are in school in class, you know? It's just, it's a big deal, you know?
And then, uh, alright. Uh, reevaluation of, of current teacher observation instrument for our, this core alternative research-based framework, this is a master initiative. We just want to make sure that our instrument allows us to target structure like the administrators want us to evaluate the teachers. And I think that we just have to, we should, this is for time, and then the fourth one, I kind of, we were talking about the referendums, just, uh, that brings a three, which is. It's definitely, I have to talk, you cover a budget, budget, I can find one. It just makes me the most nervous.
Five, I'm speaking a lot, I would say, well, I, I don't think any of those were worth tossing, but in my opinion, if there's one that has to stay.
So she's kind of like cutting me down, so more like, related person. The only, the only thing that, you know, I, in professional development, I will, I do have concerns about, I'd say, about, I'm sure. We have, like, development, you know, in that process, we need some professional training for staff, and we do not have that, um, so that we, I'm rushed in, and not sure, given the conversation that we've had tonight, we have the intention to find one. So you're talking about number three?
Yeah. I do think that we need to engage in that process, and I do think it's time to revisit the tool. I definitely think there's value in that, because there are tools, we've had this conversation, and it's, I just, I'm not really sure that we need the right of faculty, that we have that direction, that properly supporting, and, and understanding, and, and that. And, you know, and especially because, you know, some years, oh, we have title, we don't have that right now, we don't know where we're gonna get that, and it's, it's a little, that's. we'll have that right now, we'll, we're going to get that, and it's, it's a little messy. Because you can still do it without making your goal, you can still work on it without making your goal. But I think that's really more decision-making, guys, to us, it's your goals too.
Knowing that it's a priority or an interest, and maybe we can go into action, to budget, think about what that might look like, so for committing, and, you know, like, yeah, training.
Well, I'd put you on the spot, but when we talk about money, it's not, because there are costs, the dollar mill that we're missing, it is like twenty thousand, fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty thousand, from version, like, what is the amount of money you need to properly fund it? And if you want to get back to your, the last thing I'm trying to do.
I don't, I'm not really sure, but I know that the last time the district engaged in the process, there were layers of training, of, at, you know, for value, of value maintenance, and it just.
It won't happen in a year.
No.
Thank you.
These frameworks, do they come with, like, just like, these frameworks, do they go like a, sort of software process? So like, do we need to have something else, really, it's not like that.
So. So by, by migrating to frontline, we basically take whatever would be needed, whatever is true, and put it in. So right now, we're operating for trial, for trials and tests, and that's it. And trial has a control, waivers for anybody else, and trial has seventeen, they're twice as full. Danielson, probably mostly opposite, and a lot of them are straight from, from those. They have waivers for the policies, they have waivers for migrating specialists, nurses, so you can actually purchase the rights to those waivers as well. You have to be on for that, because if you target that, there's now their goal to be the platform for us. We're actually, actually being operating for Danielson right now, um, just because we want something in the policy. We can't have narrative for some, for Alphersaw, doesn't make sense, so that's the, that would be a goal of that, to identify what is going on, and how to do it. Now, moving forward, we have for online, it's the same operating system. If you want to eventually go to like Danielson, or control, or whatever it is, you have to get the waivers, you have to hold up community teachers. Now, I wish.
Yep. Any other questions regarding future decisions? Okay. She's like, yes. All right, so we've achieved our goals. We're going to move on to our presentation. Hopefully, we'll see the key points of the presentation.
I know.
Well, this is not the long one. This is just one thought, it's not a lot to ask. Let's take a two-minute break. We're all leaving, don't worry about it. I think it's going to take enough hours. Okay, so, uh, so good evening, tonight I'm going to share our results of the spring twenty twenty-five administration. Joey, go sit down. Dan, can you just take a quick break for a second from the recording?
Sorry.
No.
Okay, good evening. This evening, I'm going to share the results of the spring 2025 administration of the MJGPA and Access for LELs. As a reminder, the MJGPA, or the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, is administered to all eleventh grade students and to any students who have not previously demonstrated proficiency on the assessment. The MJGPA is designed to measure the extent to which students are deemed graduation-ready in two content areas, English Language Arts and Mathematics. The ELA component of the assessment is aligned to the 10th grade English Language Arts standards, and the math component is aligned to Algebra I and Geometry. Students are required to score a minimum of 7.25 on each of those components. And it's important to note that the MJGPA is one of multiple pathways to demonstrating proficiency for graduation. Students can retest if they're not deemed graduation-ready, which we administer in the fall after the spring administration, and then we also go through the portfolio KEL process. This year, we've had 100% participation for the assessment. All students who were eligible to take it, sat for the test. Here are our results. So you can see that we achieved 90.2% in English Language Arts and 75% in Math. Here is a look at our historical performance on the assessment, beginning with 2023 and to this current administration in 2025. You'll see that we increasingly complain in the area of Mathematics, which is very success. And this is just showing the percentage of students who were not graduation-ready in both content areas across the three-year period. And this slide is showing us our district's performance compared to the state's performance in each of the content areas across the three-year period. You'll see that across three years, we're consistently outperforming the state average in both content areas. The Access for LELs, the Access is actually an English Language Proficiency Assessment that we administer to what we now refer to as our MLLs, or Multi-Level Learners. And students of K through 12 take this assessment. It's administered in the second half of the school year, late winter, early spring. And our teachers use the results of this assessment to make decisions about students' academic language and really how to facilitate their continued language development. The scoring on this is a little bit different in that there are six domains, beginning with Level 1 entering, and Level 6 is the most proficient, which is her two was reaching. So we had 100% participation across all three levels for eligible multi-level learners. Important to note here, the students, when they take this assessment, it's not specific to grade level. They're actually clustered because it's language development and English Language Proficiency. It's not really specific to grade level expectations, really developmental. So beginning with second grade, we cluster second and third, fourth and fifth, middle school, and then high school.
And the other part is, they might be part of a cluster of two or three. We're talking all that I mean, learners. Some kids are like on the cusp of being proficient in English, and they're still qualified as MLLs, where others are literally arriving to our country and have low English whatsoever, and they're taking the same test in that cluster. So that makes it very difficult for the teachers, obviously, and also with the, again, the mutual assessment of, um, in one year.
Yeah, so typically, like any assessment, we want to see students meeting or kind of in that end of the higher level proficiency, but because we have students who are in with no English knowledge, you'll really see students scoring in the GPs, uh, performance levels across the board. So this is kindergarten, and here we have first grade percentages because our levels are a bit smaller. Grade 2, 3, 4, 5, middle school, and high school. So I did bring out some points, notes of achievements to share with you. So in 2025, the percentage of 11 graders who were deemed graduation-ready on the MJGPA in Math rose to 75%, which formed a 9.65% increase from 68.4% in 2024, really reflecting a significant improvement in progress in student. In 2025, 75% of 11 graders were deemed graduation-ready in Math with an impressive 15.03% increase from 65.2 in 2023. We did see a small gain in English Language Arts as well, but because we're already high achieving in this area, the gains are naturally smaller. So in 2025, we had 90.2%, and that's a small increase, we're beating up 9%, whereas when there's not as much room to grow, um, to help the kids. And then just gonna, and I can breathe this in, or I'll just share some of the things that we are continuing to do. We have our year-long professional learning continuum, which aligns with our digital calendar, utilizing our Monday meetings for ongoing PD, collaborative planning, and virtual articulation. This is really helping to make sure that our faculty is really equipped to address student meetings across all content areas, but particularly in English Language Arts, Math, and Language Development for those MLLs. And I haven't talked about this yet, but we are meeting, I haven't talked about this in a few weeks, but we are meeting new standards in all content areas with the exception of ELA and Math. So we recently revised the curriculum in both of those content areas. Now all of the other seven content areas will have new standards. So that will translate to collaborative planning sessions for our teachers to revise curricula, and we're really going to look at integrating ELA and Math in all of those other content areas, such as science and social studies, to reinforce cross-disciplinary learning and support student needs, targeting that with ELA interventions. We really hold this penalty on data-driven interventions and small group instruction, particularly for students who are not meeting benchmarks. These small group lessons really help hand around deficiencies that are identified in assessments that students take and help fill in gaps in ELA and Math. We're going to look at the resources that we provide for our multi-level learners, not just when they're working with our BSL teachers, but also in their classrooms, and opportunities for teachers to strengthen our MLLs' English language composition. This will encompass integrating strategies in both of the content areas, emphasizing vocabulary development for proficiency in having different language skills to help our MLLs meet expectations set forth by New Jersey Student Learning Standards. And I do have a wonderful team of BSL teachers here, and I know that they are an asset to the faculty in the building, so I think they will be on the list of people to discover. And then, of course, we're always looking at the results of all of our assessments, not just standardized assessments, but also our district benchmarks and course assessments to adjust instructional strategies and to differentiate instruction to make these more vulnerable. A key part of that is also making sure that we're monitoring students' progress so that we know when to give and when to do something to help them. This presentation will be up on the website tomorrow, so for those of you watching who are interested, we'll be there. Do you have any questions?
I don't know. I have a question. Where last year, we did this with that on the ELA, and this year, but interestingly, there's a person who's not a New Jersey adult that we're going to talk about.
Yeah, and it's interesting, we just had Mr. Gloss on our conversation today, about the JSLA performance and how we suffer a lot from catching up, and they're performing pretty well on this assessment. Uh, maybe we do some more, but I think that's, I think it's not to separate the different sections that they are. Thank you. Superintendent, some of your comments?
All right. Thanks for hanging in, everybody. I'm going to start off this report action later. I'd like to approve the June 2025 HIV report. Glad to report the Mofo High School had no HIVs, Berkeley gives that no HIV, DEO had one HIV-3.3, friends admitted, and that HIV was investigated and the allegation was found. I'd like to ask for approval for the June suspension report. The Mofo High School, Berkeley, and Gibbs, no students were suspended in June, DEO. Five students were suspended for total of six days. Two students need to serve one day of at-school suspension. Two students need to serve one day of principal suspension. One student needs to serve two days of suspension. We'll see on here, approval for the COVID-19 protection plan, and if you watch, I'd strongly encourage you to go with this protection plan. It costs only $25 per child, it's $75 per family, but it greatly reduces any risk you have or your child has for incurring any cost associated with access to that COVID-19 program, which we currently have over 80% of students who are participating. I'd like to thank the Mofo Administrative Association and negotiations committee for the certification for the agreement, the contract, tremendous amount of work, but negotiations committee, just intense conversations back and forth. I just wanted to thank both parties about the number of people that are present. I'm happy to be able to get personal recommendations. Just the part-time band instructor. We are hoping at an increase in our band in middle school. We could have, of course, 90 students in the middle school band next year, if all the students from fifth grade and parry go into middle school. There is inevitably going to be some drop-off, most likely, but we anticipate a 775, um, from what this instructor will allow, at $35 a lesson, even where he's at a tower to take a small group, he's going to take a small group, so he's teaching whole group lessons all the time, which by high school, that's kind of acceptable, but middle school, they're still learning, so I think that's great. I got a guy personally, very experienced, he was a guy who also worked in a margin band, so there is also a great performance. Couple of new positions, Ms. Ebony, a legacy kind of institution. She applied, she's a resident for the job, so she will be coming to her preschool, and we've done this all school well for her. We also have Mr. Howell, who worked in, from, you know, in the Gibbs group. And we have Sullivan, who was promoted to supervise guidance and administration for a long time. She was the coach, she had the committee, and that went through, through the, and these go up. She was another one in age one. Personally, she's going to work hard in the management respect of the Brown, but I think she did a great job in galvanizing and guiding the department. And Ms. from home, from the elementary school, she's going to go to middle school. She's been down there for hundreds of decades, and just, I guess she just needs a change, needs to refresh her. But both are currently looking for another, um, position. Most important is Rob, um, basketball coach. Right girls basketball coach, aggressive coach, track coaches. This is part of the finance facilities, the SROs and SROs are up for reassignment. They're in amazing condition. I came into this job, you know, if we had budgets like that, it's something I don't worry, are they actually necessary? They are terrible at what we do here in terms of communication, not just the safety, the security, the law, just, you know, we have all good people in those positions, which is amazing, but anything you ask them to do, they do, they're not a punchline, especially those elementary school students from middle schools. They are honored, they are more than just a person, they're coming from Texas, they're actually, I see, they're getting promoted, hugging them, saying goodbye, crying, feeling unbelievable this summer. So that is a good connection that we have with these officers, and we look forward to that because that is a bond they're creating. It don't have to be free for these officers, it doesn't have to be free for these officers, you know, I'm a good man. But you can see that they're learning to respect that, that's what they identify, you know, they basically friends to, you know, they're always there to be grateful. We got a grant for unified champion, unified school grant, it's an amazing program. I encourage you who have never seen this program, with Audrey and the Rock, there are some specialized students with general students in good basketball, and they're all time on the range, and it's an amazing program, and they play other towns. I encourage you, I will definitely speak to this once they get their schedule out, encourage you to go. Also, I'd like to thank, also, the touchdown, the Black Right, to full track donation, which is $12,000 to help the competitive children. Policy, policy, they're doing a good job, I'll handle that, there are a number of policies out there. Other news, I explained, we're still waiting for total one through four funds, it doesn't impact us, I'm hoping to get funds, they have not said no, it's just like a holding pattern, so we still have hope. ESY is all running, it's a huge ESY program, hundreds of kids. And then we have a varsity sports camp, which is one of our teachers actually work these camps, it's a great opportunity for kids, so they're actually looking for something to do with their kids, they're in good hands here. We started at a park, when we were a little around, on the bus, avoiding floods, which we were lucky to avoid before, it was recently, I was on the phone with the mayor, last night during the torrent downpour, and the river only got up to 1214. We started worrying when it was 11:23 until we weren't even close, so then the drought released to that, and it was out, but there's still, the burrow was resting with people like cars, flash floods, and the local burrow, very busy, we didn't have a lot of money. We did have power, power outage in Gibbs, this morning, flood, power, track staff, and suddenly made a call, and they got back operating, so we just dropped this ride. And then we talked about it on the website, and one of the websites.
Any questions? Assistant Superintendent, I want to ask that. This evening on the agenda, you'll see that we are expanding our dual enrollment options, so one of our students, a senior college student, a neighbor of our students, was recently approved for credit, a person, we're really excited about that. Also, we're doing a different emergency virtual overall construction plan. This has been in place since the pandemic. It's something that we revisit each year, trying to, to be, and then submit to the county approval. I also recently submitted a viable labor waiver. We have, the district has four of that 20 students in a given language who are required by code to follow by the law, um, instruction. However, because our students are spread across the community, both through the general continuum, it would be distantly responsible for us to offer a viable classroom at each grade level, so we apply for annual waiver in order to provide, looks referred to as high-intensity BSL, high-intensity BSL, if those students in that one language receive an extra period of instruction. So that was recently submitted to the county. We also recently submitted the final number of the high introductory grant that, I believe, maybe it was a two-year grant that we have, but I think this should be the final number in the stack. Mr. Gloss also mentioned, we're still waiting to see the compensation for title funding, just to mention something that we intended to do, we have to. Last year, we did all of the step-up program, which was a transition program for incoming first grade students. We held out as long as we could, we will be able to offer that in August to help our students this summer. Over with that, what we look to, and that will benefit our students. And as I recently got updates on New Jersey Student Learning Standards, the standards in this content area that we're doing, and then we have. Oh, my own question.
They were in the worst case scenario. Also, just like, presenters, the DEO, if you, that's a lot of, so now, we have, we have, we have, we have teachers' contract, as well, so that was still continued in terms of, bring consultants in, you know, that now is on break. Title three, this is where we, so luckily, the district has done a great job, buyers, and we pay for all our teachers, we're not going to buy into these funds for teachers. I talked to some districts, these super-denditors losing their mind, because they don't get these funds, they have to lay off staff, it does affect Skype as well, so, so, we need to speak more to them, like, what are our type of funds?
Yeah, so some, after school support, we do a little lecture, bits of online construction, extended school day, anything where the teachers are working outside of their regular hours, they would receive extra pay. There's also some of that money, title three, instead of, you know, lots of the learners get that extra support. We're just looking, a lot of instructional supplies, materials, conference fees, which there are some requirements for those title three self-learners to say that is a time when it happens. Title four, we do a lot of like, safe and healthy student programming, love presentations for kids, so.
It's really crazy because districts are dependent on this money, we're constantly, when you talk about what has precedent, you expect some type of funds.
Think back to the public, title one through four, where is that money?
So that is, SO is national, and then the national pretty much gives states the funding. Right now, the national, right Tony, the national has not given the money to the states. The allocation should come by July 1st every single year, they did not say no, they're just delaying it and saying it's kind of a hold. It's a huge problem for school districts, because right away, step up, we can't, we can advertise it and set up teachers and say we're doing it, and then the money never comes in, and people make these plans and everything else, that's not fair too. So it's already affecting us just with the lag, and so.
Last year, we received the extension to June 17. May I just make a comment, so, the Department of Education, they, or if the government can't do that, it shouldn't be contracted.
That's the Department of Education distributes to the states, and the states must distribute to the schools.
So I think, you know, realistically, to be said, that there's not going to be a permanent education. I think there's pressures in the way those funds are.
It's significant. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're already, and when you talk about coming to, goes back to this, we talk about money all the time, we talk about money all the time. It's just a convergence of so many things, you guys just sell the truck for the 1.8, now gets hundreds of thousands of dollars in title funds, I mean, it is just, health insurance costs continue to go up, and we're just getting it from all angles right now. We're trying to stay a quarter, and I think we're doing a great job today, but, but I'm also not sugarcoating that this is going to be, one year, we did a policy recognition budget cut, how to fix, it's not, unless we figure it out, especially.
So do we need to, like, I know this might sound stupid, but like, more outreach to our state senators, to our governors, like whoever, or even like the school boards, because, which I'm sure they're doing, because they're emailing us about it, but what else can we do to like, make it more, I don't think people know this, I know they know about the Department of Education, but I don't think they realize how it truly affects us individual districts in our state, and I think that needs to get out more because more and counter, I think it really is about, they weren't allowed to.
State stepped in with the budget.
And they said they can raise taxes to 13%.
Well, I, no, it's not, they improved the budget, um, and increased 13%. Crazy. But unfortunately, with the title money, because we were so strategic in removing the salaries from here, a lot of these things are means that kids are feeling. So that's, we're hopeful that we'll get it, but it's already having a tap because of the ELA, and things that we would have offered, we're not able to.
They very good, right? We offer the same resources as the children, we talk about after school, I guess targeted instruction for the kids are really weird, and that's what title fund, it doesn't mean for, like, after school, I mean, it's such a support, it's targeted. They may not have, we are not financially sound enough, like, all right, we will just start supplementing out of our own budget, and then get the whole money, because of the dollar. So we're crossing fingers.
This is the administrative board, so I think you're. The, uh, start with the, kind of, we go this March, we're doing today, new serving line at middle school, which requires a lot of electric and upgrades, so that is currently underway, and we're going to have a full new serving line at the middle school. We received from the foundation, I believe it was early in the fall, a donation to the teacher lounge, also a DEO to do upgrades there, and so their maintenance crew is currently working on that, to install cabinets, has to be, electrical stuff moved, and so that's underway. The Gibbs PTO made a donation, I believe that's at the last meeting, for the playground, that open has been ordered, that should be installed sometime in the fall. The, uh, through the broad grant, I believe that was two years ago, the final allocation of the SDA.
the final allocation of the SDA ride grant money that we spent to install air conditioning. Berkeley has been, is complete and Berkeley is now fully air conditioned. And now we have the remaining being installed for the middle school. The maintenance crew is currently working to do the wiring and electric and have that installation hopefully completed sometime in the fall as well. The bus that was approved at the last meeting has arrived. It's currently parked at the middle school, but I didn't consider where we were for passenger bus. So yet to find a way for it, or we will. It's not on the road yet because we're waiting for GPS and radio, but that should be coming by the end of this week or early next week. Business office has started the twenty, preparing for the twenty-four, twenty-five audit. The auditors contacted us and we've been pulling all sorts of stuff. So who knows? It will probably be March yet to really complete, but it started and they have a lot of information already. We, through South Kirby Bridge Commission, put out all of our non-public bus groups. Four of them were picked up, Burton Catholic being one of them. And I highlight Burton Catholic because we were going to adore that hour buses before like Berkeley kept holding a new program that's in parameters. And so we had this quick increase in hour enrollment. And so that bus has forty-two students. We transport Burton Fields and Cresskill, Dumont. Burton Fields, we want to bring Cresskill and Riverdale as a direct transportation on that route. And so it has forty-two students. So we're going to have them. And so we were fortunate enough that that route had been picked up. So there are three other schools that will also pick up all those notifications. As of yesterday, the route information will be forthcoming sometime in August to those families. Bubbe Claws, Burton Catholic, we still have to pick up another route. So here we're going to be transporting to. And all of our district buses, this is all in ways to try to minimize our transportation costs. So that will be a tier route. We're able to do that because the start and end times are different. Challenge about that is that they have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, December. Whatever time, overtime, overtime. And Thursday is a different time. Friday is a different time. So we'll have to stagger that. But we have, one of our bus drivers works and we have a time schedule. Who's who designated sports driver. So we'll be creating our bus driver schedules and it will result in overtime, but it will cost less money to create overtime than what we need to be. And then the last thing I have is the New Jersey Department Treasury recently released the recommended rates for the state competitive plan. And the recommended rate is twenty percent. So we budgeted fifteen percent, so it's five percent. I'll budget it. Problem is that when you read this report, it seems as if the board shares or like the targets going to be a bit harder. And so that's going to make us our current budget. We did make significant cuts and go up to twenty percent. It seemed high, but this is probably the fourth year of. So those rates are not officially yet. It's just that they're recommending, so it's going to be. Any liaison board committee reports?
As Policy Chair, we're running for our purpose eleven o'clock. The Policy Committee met early last week. We have eighteen total pieces on our agenda tonight, first reading, forward policy, six regulations. Thank you to Mr. Vlazso. Get your report to everybody. So obviously, anybody has any questions, they can reach out to me. And obviously, we talked about our second meeting. In our August meeting, we actually did action on second.
Any correspondence? Open to the public. The items on the agenda is outlined in the Bill for Education by laws number sixty-seven. Each statement made by our president shall be limited to three minutes. This is a motion. Stephanie, seconded by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please, the motion to close. Joe, seconded by Nicole. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board action. Having the recommendation of the superintendent, I seek a motion for BA twenty-five dash twenty-six point one, point two, point three, point four, point five. Second. Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Educational programs, a curriculum.
I make motion to seek approval for C twenty-five dash twenty-six point one, point two, point three, point four, and point five. Seeking.
Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are they opposed now? Having the recommendation of the superintendent, I seek a motion for P twenty-five dash twenty-six point one, point two, point three, point four, point five, point six, point seven, point eight, point nine, point ten, point eleven, point twelve, point thirteen, point fourteen. That's it. Second. Stephanie, roll call.
Mr. Albron?
Yes.
Ms. Kelgrum?
Yes.
Ms. Kowdner?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Mr. President Dunn?
Yes.
President Robson?
Yes.
Finance and facilities committee, Cheryl Kelgrum.
Having our completion of the superintendent, I take a motion to approve. AC numbers. At twenty-five, at twenty-six point one, point two, point three, point four, point five, point six, point seven, point eight, point nine, point ten, point eleven, twelve, point thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, point sixteen, point seventeen.
Any second. Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Athletics Co-Curriculum, Nicole Dunn.
I seek a motion for AC twenty-five dash twenty-six point one and eight two.
Any second. Cheryl, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Policy committee, Anthony Albro.
I seek a motion and would give a second for policy twenty-five dash twenty-six point one.
Any second. Stephanie, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any old business? Any new business? Any board member request additional information? Open to the public is outlined in the Bill for Education by laws number sixty-seven. Each statement made by a specific shall be limited to three minutes. Any second. Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Seek a motion to close the public. Cheryl, seconded by Stephanie, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. I seek a motion to adjourn. Joe, seconded by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next meeting is August twenty-seventh. Thank you, everyone.